Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 4th, City of Morro Bay Planning Commission Meeting. We usually start out our meetings with a brief moment of silence, so if you please. And I'd just like to point out that all the planning commissioners are present, so we do have a quorum. And then I don't think we have any director comments to start out the meeting?
That's correct, no comments.
And so I'll go straight to a public comment for items which are not on tonight's agenda. If you have any comments about an item which is not on our agenda, now's that time. Oh, you know what? I forgot to pledge allegiance.
I was gonna remind you.
Let's do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilperson Eckles.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Eckles, resident of Morro Bay and your current city council liaison. First, I want to take a moment to thank each of you for your service on the planning commission. I actually prepared these remarks. This is something I normally don't do, but I wanted to be sure I got this message across precisely. So, thank you to each of you for your service on the planning commission and your service to the City of Morro Bay. Your role is critical in shaping the future of Morro Bay, and I recognize the time, effort, and thoughtfulness that you bring to every project that comes before you. At our last city council meeting that we just had, I spoke about the importance of fostering a culture of yes, the culture of yes, a mindset that welcomes projects and businesses while maintaining the integrity of our process. This does not mean approving anything blindly. Your responsibility as a quasi-judicial body remains unchanged, but what it does mean is that we, as a city, approach applicants as partners rather than obstacles, helping them navigate the process as efficiently and predictably as possible. Morro Bay needs to be known as a place where businesses and developers want to invest, where we provide clear guidance, and where our approval process is as smooth as possible without sacrificing quality or standards. A culture of yes means working collaboratively with our applicants to get to a project that meets both community goals and regulatory requirements, rather than sending them back to the drawing board unnecessarily. Your last meeting, you got a 5-0 approval of a project, and I think that's a great example of how we can support good projects, and I encourage you to continue leading with that mindset, a culture of yes. Thank you again for your service to Morro Bay.
Thank you. Anybody else for items not on the agenda? AGP, do we have any raised hands?
No, Commissioner, we have no raised hands.
Okay, closing public comment then. And on to our consent calendar. I believe we have some minutes. Have the commission reviewed the minutes and seen any corrections or mistakes? Or we have a motion to approve? This is the minutes from February 4th, 2025.
I motion to approve the minutes for February 4th, 2025, as submitted.
Okay. Second?
I was second then.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Yes.
I think it's 5-0. Thank you. So, that's the consent calendar, thank you. And so we're straight into public hearing B1, which is case, conditional use permit number CUP 21-09 and coastal development permit, CDP 21-029, and the location is 541 Atascadero Road. And I believe Kim's out tonight, Kim Fowler, and Suzanne, Susan will be presenting. Susan Toner.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Thanks for having me unexpectedly. I'm here to, I think there's a typo in the agenda. The case number is design review permit, DR 25, sorry, dash, oh, oh, four, sorry. So, case number, design review permit, DR 25-004, and coastal development permit, CDP 21-029. Just a quick correction from the agenda. So we'll get started with the presentation. Here's the project location. It is located on the intersection of Hill Street and Highway 41 in Morro Bay. Next. Project description. Here are the unit calculations broken down as seen in the staff report. There are four units in the multifamily structure along with one ADU. There are seven parking spaces required and seven provided. Two of them are covered, and the ADU requires no parking spaces. The land use for the site is high-density residential with a minimum density of 15.1 units per acre and a maximum density of 27 units per acre. Based on density calculations, that would be between three and five primary residential units, and the project is proposing four plus an ADU. ADUs don't count towards density calculations. Here are the zoning code standards, like block coverage, building height, front side, corner setbacks, and how the project complies with all of them, with the standard, what is proposed, and whether it complies, and it complies to all the standards from the zoning code. Here is a slide with the site plan showing the overall bird's-eye view of the project, and you can see the five uncovered spaces, but again, there are two more spaces located in the garages, the garage for unit one and unit two. Here is the rendering, as would be seen from the service road on highway, along Highway 41, where you can see, again, those five uncovered spaces, and you can actually see the two garage doors for the single-car garages. And here's the second rendering, as seen from Hill Street. Both renderings show a sign for the apartment. Sign is not part of this approval. The project will have to come forward with a separate, to come to the Community Development Department for a separate sign permit approval. Here's the color and materials board. The first floor will be horizontal green siding, and the second floor will be light cream boredom-batten siding with a black metal roof. It is in the coastal California bungalow architectural style. Here's neighborhood compatibility, showing the renderings along with the context of the site and the immediate surrounding uses. So there are single-family homes along with multifamily residential projects in the adjacent area. And then Airland's gonna talk about the housing element really quick.
So, just very briefly, as far as the city's regional housing needs allocation. So since the commission hasn't seen a housing project of more than a couple of units in a while, although this project is only five units, the city doesn't receive too many housing projects, we just want to take a moment to talk about how the units that result from this project, once building permits are issued and eventually finalized, would count towards our regional housing needs allocation goals for the current housing element cycle. So we're currently halfway through the 10-year RENA cycle, and if you look at the bottom row here on this table, you add up all of the units that have had permits finalized in all of the income categories, there've been 180 units permitted so far in Morro Bay, which is just about half, or less, just less than half of the total RENA required of 391 units. But if you look at the individual income levels, you can see the vast majority of those units have been in the above moderate income category with 111. The five units that are provided by this project would all count also in that above moderate income category because they're not deed-restricted affordable housing units. We are able to count ADUs in the moderate income category when they're below 500 square feet, but the ADU in this case is over 500 square feet, so it would not count towards moderate. So that's just some context on how this project would contribute towards our RENA goals.
So, this project does require a modification to allow the parking to be partially located within the front and corner side setback. I can go back to the site plan to show you where that is. And then also included on this slide are the required findings to make that modification if necessary. The project is also proposing parking, like each individual parking stall is smaller than the required parking stall. So, a parking stall, as defined by the code, is nine feet by 20 feet, and the parking stalls proposed are nine feet by 18 feet. The code does allow, when there is a project with four or more spaces, for 25% of those spaces to be eight and a half by 18 feet and labeled as compact spaces, but the five surface parking spaces are going to be nine feet by 18 feet, so over that 25% allowance. So that, so the modification would be to allow the parking within the front and corner side setback and to also allow the smaller compact spaces. Okay.
And I'll just add to that, that staff is recommending the commission make the findings for that parking modification, particularly since the site is highly constrained, given the shape and topography and the wide right-of-way of Highway 41 right there. And of course, the modification would allow for housing, which is a priority for the city.
Therefore, staff recommends approval of coastal development permit, CDP 21-029, and design review permit, DR 25-004, subject to the attached findings and conditions of approval in Planning Commission Resolution Number 02-25, and the resolution would also be modified to include those modification findings.
Okay, great. Do we have questions for staff on this? Joe?
If, if an exception were not available with respect to parking, where, where would it, where would the parking typically be? I mean...
So I'll start responding, and Susannah may want to add. I think if the, you know, commission were to not approve the parking modification, the applicant would have to go back to their site plan and see if they can reconfigure the layout, maybe reduce the size of units, or reduce the number of units to be able to meet the parking requirements without a modification.
Meaning, the parking might be in the rear, but that presents a design challenge, given the slope. I'm just trying to understand why it is that the parking is in front. Or maybe, maybe, maybe that's not the, I don't understand the exception. I guess I'd like to understand, I'm muddled, I'm muddled here. The parking is going to be in the front. That's the exception that's being asked, and I'd like an explanation as to why that's necessary, if you could get specific.
It might be helpful to, if we could show on the site plan, because it's not necessarily the, an exception to put the parking in the front, it's just an exception that allows for the parking spaces to be partially located within the front setback. And Susannah can maybe point that out on the slide.
Yeah, so I pulled up the, it's kind of small, sorry, I wish I made it bigger, but the, the exception isn't to allow the parking within the front of the project, it's to allow for the portion of the parking spaces that are located within the front setback. The zoning code reads in 1727, I think, the Parking and Loading Chapter, that all required parking must be located outside of the front and corner side setback, so it's outside of that 15-foot and 10-foot setback. So the project as proposed has the parking spaces partially within the 10-foot setback along the service road for State Highway 41.
And that's the area I'm trying to delineate here, just cuts through the front setback right here, a sliver.
So that's what the, it wouldn't be to allow for the parking in the front, like the parking can be in the front, it's to allow for the sliver to be within that, in the setback.
Thank you. And then, is there any requirement?
What's the requirement, if any, for covered parking? I know there's two garage spaces, is that the minimum, or is there no minimum, or what?
So, under the old zoning code, there was a requirement for parking spaces to be covered and enclosed. The new code no longer requires any covered spaces.
Could you explain, like, what the definition of the ADU here is? And this is just from my education, like, why is it an ADU as opposed to another unit?
So, the city zoning code does allow for ADUs in multifamily zoning district and multifamily projects. I think it's 25% of the units of a multifamily project can be an ADU. I don't know, Susannah's checking the density, I'm not sure if a fifth unit would be allowed if it was not an ADU unit. A fifth unit would be allowed. The applicant proposed in their project that the fifth unit be an ADU that could provide certain protections under state law. They proposed that unit as an ADU, but we haven't analyzed a five-unit project, I guess, so it's really difficult for us to kind of make that analysis.
But outside of this project, is there a definition? And maybe this is something we could talk about later, you could send later, just curious about, like, what defines something as an ADU versus a regular unit and multifamily units? So, just, that was really my only question.
I think so. ADUs are residential units, so like, under building code, they would be built as residential units. I think the, like, ADU state law has certain provisions to allow for them to be, you know, approved ministerially, to not have any parking requirements. So like this, there are only seven required parking spaces because the ADU doesn't require parking, and because the site is so constrained, maybe that's why the fifth unit was designated as an ADU. I can't speak for the applicant, but maybe that's why the ADU was designated, the fifth unit was designated as an ADU, so to kind of help with the constrained, already constrained parking. But, like, for all intents and purposes, like, an ADU has a full kitchen, it has, you know, the bedrooms, it is a residential unit, it's just accessory to the primary unit of the multifamily housing, if that answers your question. If not...
I think so. Thanks.
Tony?
To follow up on the ADU question, I know that in my neighborhood, I'm allowed an ADU that's maximum 1,200 square feet, so I think that's part of the ADU requirement, is that it's limited on square footage for conditioned space. Does this particular project have, is it a 1,200-max square footage allowance, or is it lower?
The 1,200-square-foot max is for detached ADUs, so like, separate from the primary structure. Attached ADUs are actually limited to 1,000 square feet, and this, this one is limited to 1,000 square feet, although it's, I think, 700?
That's quite a bit smaller.
730, yeah.
And would this project be allowed to put in a junior ADU in the future?
No, junior ADUs are only for single-family homes. Multifamily projects don't have junior ADU allowances.
Okay.
My questions were regarding the parking, so no further questions from me.
I have a couple. I'm questioning this. I noticed there are four storage units, there's storage units for one, two, and four, but there's no storage unit for three. Is storage something that's required, or is that just an optional thing, as an amenity provided?
So, 200 cubic square feet of storage is required per unit in multifamily development. I think what we talked about, so there, like you mentioned, there's storage for units one, two, four, and the ADU, but not for unit three. So I think what we talked about as staff was maybe redesignating that ADU storage to unit three to meet the minimum storage requirement for unit three. And the ADU has no storage requirement, so it would be okay.
Then, I just noted, this is just a note, that the unit four storage area, as noted on the plans, the dimensions and square footage are noted wrong on the plan set, so that just needs to get changed to be accurate. This is the storage units underneath the staircase, those dimensions and square footage are wrong. And then, on the rendering, the rendering of the, the three-dimensional rendering and the west elevation differ from one another, the difference being the awning over the top of the door into the entry, the ADU is in the, is not in the rendering, but it is on the elevation, and I presume the elevation trumps, but I just want to verify that that, I want those folks to be able to stand out of the rain when they unlock their door, and I think the rendering shows it that way, and so I'm just hoping that they...
Yes, the project will be, sorry, the project will be built to the elevations, not the proposed renderings.
Okay.
So the elevations would supersede any renderings.
Then this is kind of a dumb question, but do the storage units require an electrical outlet?
They do not require an electrical outlet. They can have electrical outlets. I talked to our building division, and they just need certain type of outlets. So they can have outlets if that's what's proposed, or if that's what, if you guys...
This is, this is not a, I'll bring this up in my comments later, it's not, it's not something I want to require the applicant to do, it's just a suggestion. And then I noticed that there's a perimeter fence in the three-dimensional drawings, but I didn't notice the fence in the plans, nor did I read about the fence, so what's the status of the fencing?
The fence is not shown on the plans. Fences don't require permits, but any fence that's built on the property, if, it will have to be, it will have to follow Morro Bay standards, which is, I think, in this area, in the front and corner side setbacks, it would be three feet for a solid fence, four feet for a fence that's 50% open to light and air.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thanks. Any other questions from you guys? Okay, then I think we'll open it up to the applicant. Is the applicant here tonight, and do they want to make a presentation? Hi, please state your name and...
I'm Preston Jones. I drew the plans, and so this is basically representing the owner, Mark Eisman.
Welcome.
So basically, yeah, we're just, you know, trying to provide housing, it's an empty lot, it, you know, fits the site, it's, you know, pretty tight as far as the parking goes. And so, I just felt like, you know, doing, doing something small as you enter Morro Bay, or other than, you know, a big, you know, three-story building, we could have maxed out the density using a state density bonus to do something like, you know, that's right down the street, and so that's kind of what we came up with.
Okay. I have a question for you, if you don't mind, and maybe, do you guys have any questions? Go ahead.
I was, I was looking at the landscape page, and I, and I noticed that there's something called, it's a something, deer grass. I was looking at the parking in front, and I was, you know, wondering what we could do to sort of break up the view of, of the parking lot from, from the highway, and you've got some of those larger bushes that are to the, looking on the map, to the southwest. I just, and I can see how the property sort of narrows as you go. Is it possible to plant something that's a little bit higher in that narrow strip, or are you just restricted by the dirt that you've got there?
No, I mean, we can plant different plants, but I mean, I'm not a landscape architect, but the landscape architect is, you know, familiar with Morro Bay, and so it was just plants that are, you know, specific to the climate, so if they're, I mean, if that's a comment, you want to make something bigger to kind of block some of that wall, that's totally acceptable.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I was...
No, I agree with that, just to help mask it, so you don't have this big wall with a fence on top of it.
Yeah.
On the landscape plan, it does show some substantially large oak trees, it looks like, along the front there, so as those grow in, that would certainly help, but, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. Sorry.
I just wanted to go back to what Joe asked staff, I'm sorry, Commissioner and Graffy, asked staff about parking being in the front versus being in the back. Was that a design decision based on the configuration of the property?
Yeah, a little bit. So it's basically on a slope like this, so to make it flat like this, it's easier to just, given the topography of, I think it's Hill Street right here, to swing in kind of towards the front rather than the back, and just for massing, too, if you have this big two-story structure up against the front, of as you drive in, it looks better to have the structure set towards the back, in my opinion.
Okay. That makes sense. Thanks.
And then to answer your ADU questions, they're basically exempt from, like, lock coverage, and then, you know, like you said, parking, floor air ratio, setbacks and all that, so if you add that other density unit, we probably would have been over on those things as well.
I have a question with respect to, I'm guessing it's a chase for the utility room. If you're upstairs between units one and two, the two, there's a hallway from the stairs and then the two doorways, and at the end of that hallway is a volume, it looks like about four feet by four feet. Is that a chase for the downstairs, or...
Yeah, correct. So there'll be, you know, mechanical units in that storage back there, you know, mechanical room, and then they're gonna come up, and that'll all be firewall to get it up into the attic space, and then it'll go to all the units and down, so that it's, you know, forced air unit.
Yeah, I was looking for the utility room and guessing that that was the chase, and not, I mean, not a extra storage unit. Okay, thank you, unless you have more.
I think that's it. If you guys are getting any questions, that's it.
Okay. Thanks. I'll open it up to questions from public, comments from the public on this item? Anyone? Welcome, Ms. Winholz.
Thank you, Betty Winholz. I have three or four questions. One, having lived in an apartment building for several years, I'm sensitive to noise between units, and so I'm, I'm just wondering, at the comfort level of, these are five units that are really tight, and so I'm wondering what's been done about noise between the units. That would be one comment. Two, also, being a renter, I'm sensitive to whether or not I get to have storage outside. And if you're taking storage away from the ADU to give to a regular unit, then now the ADU has no storage, and I think you need to require that every unit has storage. It's just something you should do, even if it's a shed or something, but everybody should be, have that. Then with regard to the fact that it's four units, four regular units and then ADU, and not five regular units, I think this is true, if you have five or more units, doesn't one of them have to become low-income? Isn't that required?
It's dependent on unit size, so if the units, I think, are like 1,500 square feet or more, then yes, there is the requirement for deed-restricted affordable housing, but due to the size of these units, they...
Since they're all tiny?
Yeah, they don't meet the...
Requirement?
Yes. Thank you.
I was wondering about that. So, storage, sound, ADU, I must have covered... Must have covered the other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Eckles. I should have mentioned before, when I spoke to you, that I was speaking on behalf of myself and not of the city council. I do have a comment as an individual with regard to this project. I have a lot of experience in the affordable housing industry and policymaking with regard to affordable housing. This, this comes as close as you're ever gonna get to something we call affordable by design, so this is an... an example of affordable by design. We've been asking for this. The community asked for this. Policymakers asked for this. Uh, everyone asked for this. And I'm just, I just want to say that I'm pleased to see, uh, an applicant being creative in this way, providing not subsidized affordable housing, but actual affordable by design housing. So, um, we know that we desperately need, uh, units, housing units in our community, and this, I believe, fits that need in a particular, uh, niche as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, AGP, do we have any raised hands?
No, Commissioner, there are no raised.
Okay. Uh, staff, Erin, Susan, do we have any responses? Do you have any responses to any?
So I can start off with, um, some responses, and Susannah may want to add, as far as the comment regarding, uh, noise between units. So, um, standard, uh, you know, building code requirements are designed to, um, address those concerns. The project would be required to meet the standard building code, um, requirements. Susannah and I were just looking at the plans right now about the question for having storage space for the ADU. Um, if that's something that the commission thinks is necessary or appropriate, we could add a, a condition that requires storage space to be identified for the ADU. We're looking at the plans, trying to see where exactly that storage space will be provided. Perhaps if that's the direction the commission wants to take, we could have the applicant come up and see if they can suggest how to incorporate additional storage space, or if that would be possible. And Susannah reminded me, under state law, we cannot, um, add a condition to the, uh, ADU to add storage. So it would have to be for storage, for unit number 3.
Okay. So it's back to you guys for discussion. Any...
Well, I'm, I'm struck by the reality of, you know, whether there is adequate storage, people nevertheless bring their stuff to the property. So I think we should try to provide something, be it, we won't call it, um, I'd, I'd like to talk to the applicant, and we wouldn't call it part of ADU, but we, I think Betty's suggestion is good that, you know, we should have some, uh, resource there. And I certainly applaud the possibility of bringing something resembling affordable housing to Moro Bay, and, and I employed the rather attractive, uh, design of the property, and, and, and the, uh, the applicant seemed very cooperative in terms of maybe adding a few more plants that would grow a little higher and break up the view of the parking lot there. Um, those are really my only comments. Asia?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, what I like about this project is that it, um, rather than having the look of, um, like a commercial, commercial rental unit, it looks like, um, a large house that can blend into the neighborhood. I really appreciate how it's designed, and that it has multiple units, but could be mistaken for a large house, at least as it's rendered. Um, I agree with Joe that what would be nice is to, like, kind of mask the view of the parking lot at, in order to keep that, um, homey residential feel for the neighborhood. Um, if, while those oaks are growing in, in the meantime, if you could break up the view in the front there with some larger plants, that would be, I think that would really add to it. I'm not sure I can agree with conditioning, uh, extra storage space, especially if it's something that would increase the cost of, um, some of these smaller units. I, I know storage space is important, but, um, I just don't think, I just don't think I can go for that, to be honest. Apartment living storage space is great, but if it's not required, I wouldn't want to, unless it's easily done, I wouldn't want to condition it, make it a condition.
I think we'll maybe ask the applicant about that.
Yeah, yeah. But otherwise, yeah, I'm very much in support of the project.
Tony?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the lower floor plan now, and there is ADU storage shown. Is that being absorbed by one of the other union, units? Is that what you said earlier?
I was just noticing that there was no storage for one of the, one of the residential units, while the ADU did have storage. And legally, what needs to have the storage is the normal residential unit, and the ADU legally doesn't need the storage.
The flip-flop.
So it's essentially just relabeling, and how it actually gets used, I'm just going to go like that.
Yeah, exactly.
But legally, it needs to be described differently, and then, I think, I'd just like to talk to the applicant once we're done chatting briefly about that.
Yeah, and I, I think there is plenty of room for outdoor storage behind the ADU as it is, uh, nothing formal, so I think that there's opportunity to provide something for kayaks, or, you know, bicycle storage, or whatever.
Yeah.
That may be.
The city has rules and regulations regarding sheds, and where they can be put, and how big they can be, et cetera. Uh, I'll leave that to, to the applicant and the city, I think.
And one other thing, too, is the plans are showing double walls between the units, just FYI, even though that's not a building, this isn't a building submittal. That's all I got.
Nice. Um, my concern would be on encroaching into the setback. However, since I think the setback is against Highway 41, I don't think that that necessarily, like, is a negative thing at all. I think people are moving pretty quickly, and that's not like a residential street, so I don't have any concern with that. Um, I think, just one other thing to add about the landscaping in that area, I think it also could be a benefit for diminishing sounds from the highway, or kind of making it quieter, masking some of those road sounds for the tenants. So I think that could have benefits for both people who are driving by, but also the people who are living there. It's a great idea.
So I also thought this was a really well-considered project, and I appreciate small housing opportunities being built in Moro Bay. Uh, we don't have enough. Um, I think with respect to, um, the shed versus storage unit versus whatever, we just need to relabel, uh, the plan set, so that it meets the requirements. Uh, and that, it's not, the, we need the extra space for the, for the, the unit rather than for the ADU. Um, but then perhaps the applicant could step up. I don't know if you're at all interested in building any more storage. We, we can't condition the ADU to have storage, I don't think legally, but we would appreciate, so that we don't have somebody's extra skateboards and bicycles out in the driveway, uh, and I think the tenant would too. And then the other thing I was going to bring up about the electrical and, and the, uh, storage units, and again, I'm not going to make this a condition, but because a lot of people use electric mobility devices, either skateboards, or scooters, or, uh, bicycles, having a, just a 110 plug in the storage units really help folks to allow them to charge, uh, those things. Uh, they would need more wiring, and, and so I'm going to leave that as your guys' decision to do that, but they're, it's, it's an amenity, in my opinion. Um, it wouldn't have to be, I don't know if they're all, I presume they're separately metered, so they would, the wiring would be a little bit confusing. Um, and I noticed that there's 2 car charging, uh, level 2 charging, uh, stations in the parking lot. I forgot to ask staff about this. Are those a requirement, or are those an amenity provided by the applicant?
So the zoning code does, in, uh, in the parking and loading section, the zoning code does require residential projects to provide EV charging, um, spaces. Um, the requirement is 50% of the spaces need to be EV, so with 7 spaces, um, 4 of the, the spaces would need to be EV, um, so over the 2 that were proposed. So, um, during the building permit, um, phase, staff would require those extra 2 spaces be added in.
Okay. Thanks. Um, with respect to the setback issue, uh, Highway 41 is, you know, a really wide right-of-way through there, and so, uh, I doubt, and I, I haven't heard any wind of that going to 4 lanes anytime soon, uh, through there. And so that little tiny frontage road, I'll call it, of Atascadero Road, um, gets very little traffic, in my opinion, so I have no problem with the, uh, extra setback issue. Um, the noise, that's something the building department will take care of. Uh, you can, you can offset stud wall, whatever the building code requires, I'm sure will be what happens. Uh, I don't have any other issues that are, uh, on my head. Yeah, please.
Um, something we did not talk about was whether or not these will be condos or rental units? Sounds like rentals.
There'll be rentals, the, to be condo units. Um, there would have, uh, needed to be a proposed subdivision, so they could be for sale. That's not proposed today, so, um, all the units will be for rent.
And then, um, what are allowances for, like, short-term rentals in a building like this?
Um, multifamily, um, sorry, multifamily parcels per the short-term rental ordinance in residential zones are not allowed to be used as short-term rental.
Okay.
So none of the units could be used as a short-term rental.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So the, the language associated with, uh, the setback issue is already, we, we would just add that to any motion somebody makes, or how, how do you want to?
Yeah, so just add to the motion, including the staff recommended findings for the parking modification.
Okay. Do we have, I think, I don't hear anybody saying no. I think we're all pretty much in agreeance. I don't, is there? Uh, sure, if you want to, Joe. We can ask him up. I, I, legal, I don't think we can require them, but we can, to, to, to build it, but we can, I'd love to hear from him, sure.
I was just wondering if the applicant would care to comment on, on our request for the storage and, and the additional planting. I, I'm realizing we're not going to require it, but I, I'd be curious as to what your opinion is.
So the, uh, basically, as you know, the ADU doesn't require it. And so, at this point, it's just a planning permit. And so when we get down to like the nitty-gritty of actually like that, you know, utility closet, because we're going to have like this fire suppression system, and, you know, the furnaces, and all the water heaters, there's probably a way to allocate another, like, storage bay out the back, but it's just until we get like, you know, the mechanical engineer involved in the fire suppression, you have to leave adequate space to make sure it all fit. And so I think there probably is a way to add an additional storage unit, and then keep one for the ADU.
Yeah, expressed a willingness to sort of look into plants that grew a little taller and, and plant them in one section, or, yeah.
Yeah. And then, um, if you look at the lower floor plan off the, the right-hand side, that unit has a second door out the side, and that could easily just be walled off, and, you know, add a storage unit off that side of it. And so I think there's just room, given the, you know, the footprint of the structure, to fit the storage in there.
Oh, yeah, it's like, it's like a little stub hall right there.
Yeah, exactly. It was just like a, kind of, there's open space requirements for the unit, so, you know, we have to allocate different areas for that, and so that was just, you know, an easy access to the little back area, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's the commission's desire, the, the motion could include, um, reference to the required findings for the parking modification, and also to add a condition for revised plans to be provided, showing that, um, the required, uh, storage space is provided for, um, unit 3. So if that's incorporated into a, a motion and the, the action from the commission, then the applicant will be required to provide those revised plans, showing the required storage space.
The only, having been on that, the other side of the table, and that, my suggestion is just to white out on your plan, or can you white out on the plans and write in, erase ADU and write in number 3, so we don't have to print out and have the architect redo everything? Hopefully that's, I don't know if you can do it that way, but I would say just, just rewrite on your plan sets, what that's supposed to be internally, and not require them to have their architect redraft the plans and reprint and resend. I don't know.
Well, this would be when they submit their construction drawings anyways, so.
Got it. Yeah, never mind then. Okay, so with those changes, I'm ready for a motion, if someone wants to make it.
All right, well, um, I move that, um, we adapt, um, permit number 2502 and coastal development permit CP, CDP 21 dash 0294, um, with those, uh...
With the staff recommendations?
Yes, with the staff recommendations with respect to the, um, the setback and, and, and the...
Storage.
Storage facility.
Thank you. So we, we have that motion. We would like to just note that there was a, a typo on the resolution, so we want to make sure the motion captures the correct design review permit number of DR 25 dash 004. If that's acceptable.
Yep, sure. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Asia, uh, do you want to take a vote on this?
Yes, I'll go ahead and, um, uh, do the roll call. So, Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Wachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner DeFazio?
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
All right. Uh, motion passes 5-0.
Applicant, thank you very much. Uh, we look forward to your project. Next up, I believe our city manager, Yvonne Kimble, has a presentation for us. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I usually sit there, so, I'm getting used to this. Oh, you're fine. You just have this new perspective to look at the podium, but that's good. Um, thank you for having me, and, um, it is my pleasure tonight to, um, update the planning commission of the city goals and objectives. Okay, tonight, I wanted to talk about, um, the, the goal-setting process, and it's a public engagement of, uh, public engagement opportunities, and then we're going to quickly go over the 10-year financial forecast, um, and then we talk about the current, current goals and objectives, and then, most importantly, we want to hear your input. City council, um, goal-setting process was outlined by the council resolution 83, nine, um, dash 18. And here, the chart indicated that the city, the framework start out with a, uh, a, uh, more broad, broad goal statement, and then we'll have objectives to describe how to reach the goal, and then, um, we come to annual budget to have a perform, a set of performance standards for each department, and that's how, um, how this framework, uh, work. And this year, we are, we should go back. This, this, this year is happened to be the year that we wanted to talk about the broader, the broad goal, which is the, um, um, the outside circle is outlined. And within the, this goal, uh, within the process, public engagement opportunity are plenty. Um, we started out doing some surveys, and so far, we have received 500 responses to this, to the survey. The survey has been closed, and the results are very interesting. Um, and then, I, and, uh, I am here tonight to present to, um, planning commission, and I have also, um, been, um, to the CFAC and, uh, as well as, um, PWEB, and you are my third stop. The city is going to host a community forum on March 13th, um, which everybody's invited, and I hope that some of you or all of you can attend. The lastly, we'll have council goal-setting on March 25th, where, where the council is going to sit on a digest and to discuss the goals among, um, among themselves, and listening to the public, and during public comments. Earlier, we talked about the whole framework is, um, contingent upon our financial situation, so there's a chart to, to, to project our, to give a forecast of a 10-year fiscal, um, situation. I would admit, it doesn't look very well, uh, when 10 years, you project down to 10 years, we'll, we'll, we'll not have money to, um, to do some projects. However, if we look at this slide, this slide indicated operational revenue and operational expenditure, and we are okay. Um, we just, if we add a capital project, then we're our, we're going to be in, in, in some, we're going to have some issues. And this one, again, is to, this one is the major, um, Q and E combined with a general fund, and as planning commission may be aware, the city have a major E and Q fund, and that's, uh... and that's funded, that's the actual, that's the sales tax, actual sales tax supported. And the city use major EQ fund to fund the public safety projects and capital improvement projects and also cleanliness of the town. And so now we're moving on to the current goals. There's four areas of focus, public infrastructure, economic vitality, housing, homeless response, and then a community engagement. Each area of focus has corresponding short-term actions. So under public infrastructure, there's seven short-term actions. Under economic vitality, there's six. And seven under housing, seven under community engagement. And there's a total of 27 short-term action goals. And this is the current status. We have completed most of them and there's a few still in progress. So I want to just go through the slides. These are, again, this is the current goals. Under public infrastructure, as you see, there's parking, there's all different things. Which one is for the community development? I'm very involved in this one. I don't see, I don't see a specific one for community development involvement in this one. But this one is very expensive because it's public infrastructure. And we were very focused on storm recovery because these goals were set right after, right after 2023's storms. And I just want to show you some pictures. I know is Planning Commission probably doesn't get to see these pictures. These are more on the infrastructure end of that. And there's examples of striping works, sidewalk improvement and park improvement. Later we'll see that. These are sidewalk improvements and some park improvements. And all these were, the majority of the work are done by Public Works Department in-house. And this, the one down the bottom, this work is done by, it's a partnership. And it's by grants and then California Correction Commission had helped with this project. The Franklin Ridley Park Improvement. And then the other area of focus is economic vitality. Under here, community development have been very closely involved. The Market Plaza Development, this has been discussed. And then the recent direction from the city council was to take a pause on that so we can focus on other priorities. And also under this area of focus, we had discussed, let's see, review city-owned properties, which the community development department is closely working with myself and other departments to have a report on. Going this way is monitor offshore wind development. Community development is involved in this activity. And then pursue grant opportunities. Community development involvement, this one is very limited. However, over that way, we look at the streamlined permit process. And this is a very, this is a focus of the community development, especially prior to the arrival of our current development director. And then the last one is presentation to council on the paid parking study and the possible implementation of a paid program. And the current, and community development department is involved in this research for paid parking program. Housing, the bulk of the activity is really under the community development department. And we did very well on this. And some of the homeless responses activities are led, have been led by the safety departments, such as police and fire. Under community engagement, and all departments are involved in this category. And the city council members have done very well as far as their own individual community outreach programs. And also Planning Commission had a joint meeting with other advisory bodies as well as the city council. So these are some of the goals under community engagement. Okay, and then moving on for this new goal, what I'm asking this commission to consider is for you to think about those things we just talked about. Are they reflecting your priorities? If yes, is there something you want to modify? If not, what are the new goals city council should consider? And if applicable, maybe you have, you can come up with some work plan to, for me to bring back to city council to consider so that there's a collective effort to move forward. Gives, give a more details for the council to consider. We wanted to make sure that the commission want to think about the workload when you answer these questions and also the financial reality of the city. These questions are really very general questions that I ask every advisory bodies for. In your case, in Planning Commission's case, you have mandatory workload and you, the community development director is going to present the workload, the work project to you after this presentation. I just want to caution you before you have some, before you come up with very large goals. Just, we want to be realistic. And again, this, on the other side, this is a calendar of what do we do for this goal-setting process. And I really hope you can make the March 13th community forum, which will be held in this location. Joe gave you some ideas of what to come up for, what to suggest as a work plan. We put this together with community development director's help. So he is going to present a lot of these things in his work plan. I think as, I like this one. I like the picture, of course. And then I also want to go back to city purpose. And I think with this planning commission, you can, you would appreciate the strategic nature of these planning process. And I put this on and I want to, lastly, I just want to thank you for your service and your input. So with that, I want, you have any question? I know I went through these slides really quickly. I wanted to, I know you already have the copies of the slides before. So any questions, we can answer you.
Hi, yeah, I had two questions. The first is, what are the grant opportunities that you are forecasting for the unfunded capital needs projects? Would you, like, for example, would you say that you have about, you know, 15% coverage in grant opportunities identified for unfunded capital needs? Or kind of what is the thought there on external funding opportunities?
Yeah, right. Thank you for the question. We, I do not, I do not believe we have 50% coverage for grant coverage for our capital improvement project. We have very robust capital project needs. And we don't have money for those needs. And we are actively looking for grants. For example, we have been working with the federal government and the state government funds for hardware infrastructure and these are ongoing efforts.
Thanks. And one other question. I know the city has spent a lot of time kind of firming up and communicating policies for the unhoused. What are the projections in terms of year-over-year expenditure to support the homeless population in Morro Bay?
Thank you for the question. I do not believe we have the data to support that. What I can offer is that the time when we, after we adopted the encampment ordinance, the city has allocated $20,000 for the cleanup of some of the incumbent site. And police department has been, they receive a lot of calls. Their calls, call volume have been gone down after, recently, after we have done, what we have done to control the homeless situation. Thank you.
You asked me to comment. I really don't have any dispute or any strong opinions about the goals and the projects associated with the goals that I see. What I will say is, you know, I have several interests that are not mentioned here or only tangentially mentioned here that I'd like to speak to. But I'm also very sensitive to the fact that the city has serious budgetary concerns. But talking about that, I have always been really impressed since I moved to Morro Bay about the amount and the depth of professional and professional expertise that exists in the population and their willingness to volunteer. And, you know, and the various committees that were able to do research and draft a report and make recommendations and really try to, at the same time minimizing the time of the city staff. And so I kind of hope that we could talk about a few of the other subjects with the notion that, you know, maybe we could form some subcommittees. So what am I talking about specifically? As is so often mentioned, the additional community benefit study, which I know is circulating. I mean, I don't think it would take very much in the way of, perhaps it wouldn't take anything at all, but certainly not very much in terms of city time and money to finally get that so that we could look at it, make our recommendations and have something in the way of a guideline for additional community benefits, realizing that at this point, I think it's only relevant probably for the Embarcadero, I get that. The downtown design district recommendations is another thing. And there's going to be a forthcoming meeting where we're going to publicize those final recommendations. Let's see, the third thing, oh, and the historic preservation ordinance. And again, we made such a good start with that. We have, you know, kind of a rough draft of an ordinance. Again, it wouldn't take that much for, you know, one of us to be on a subcommittee with other community leaders and get something that was fairly polished that would become acceptable for us to examine and pass on. And again, with very little city input. Something that's a little more ambitious. I've been, you know, becoming increasingly involved in the elementary school site and the opportunity that presents to the city. And I've really concluded that that whole business of acquiring the school property really has to be done without schools, without city finances, either without long-term debt and with no, you know, periodic payments on the debt. We really have to go, I think, to private and public developers and persuade them to come and join us in acquiring the property. But again, I think, from the meetings that I've been partaking recently, there's a significant number of experts out there who at least initially were willing to do their work on a pro bono basis and are experts in the community. And I think we could come up with a plan that doesn't require the city's funds and we might have a shot at acquiring that property. So I'd like to interest this board in taking on, at least initiating or participating in some of those efforts. And then, my final concern is, you know, in view of the disastrous consequences in Hawaii and then more recently in Southern California, I think communities all over California are going to be investigating, you know, how the building codes need to be changed to prevent the kind of disastrous things that happen in Southern California. And it screens over vents and sprinkler systems on the roof and the outside coverings of buildings being, you know, fire resistant and all those things. So again, I'd love it if, you know, we could put together a committee and drafts, persuade some people to join us who actually know something about the subject and maybe put together, you know, some sort of code addition. I don't know what you would call it, but something that starts to address for future construction some of the things that we need to do so that we don't have some disastrous fire that consumes more than we could ever imagine. That's all I have to say about it.
Yeah, I think it's, you're thinking to, I was just recalling that Firewise Communities are one way that cities kind of pursue addressing wildfire. And Cambria might be a good example of that. But I had a couple of questions for you, Mrs. Kimble. For the goals that we looked at over the last couple of years, you said that one of the priorities had been looking at the Embarcadero, the street ends and the little, basically the redevelopment of those street ends, but that the city council recommended pausing pursuing that? And I was just wondering if you could explain why?
I was referring to Market Street, the Market Street property that city council, after careful consideration and considering the workload that staff has and city council decided, let's take a pause and we can focus on other priorities. And it's likely after city council received the whole property inventory and have a more global look at what we have and can strategize it. Perhaps Planning Commission can have some, can provide some assistance to the city council on that. And then it's likely the council may want to return to the subject again.
And then my other question was about the inventory of city-owned properties. What is the motivating factor behind that task?
It's, my understanding is for economic vitality purposes from future revenue generation perspective. It is under the economic vitality category.
Okay, and then I have further comments on, like, suggestions. Should I do some of that now? Yeah, under economic vitality, I know we've talked about in the downtown design district, I know we're hearing back from them at the next meeting. But one of the points of the downtown design district was to look at the, how the city can encourage economic activity and vitality downtown specifically for some of those businesses down there. And I would really like to see some kind of economic vitality goal or task that continues that work, that looks at, I don't really know the word for it, but basically increasing activity for businesses. I know that's been an ongoing concern from the chamber in the past and have continued to hear voiced that more activities need to support downtown businesses. And I don't know what we as a commission might be able to do for that, but it seems to fall under that category.
The city has a contract with the Chamber of Commerce to help the city promote economic development activities. And we, yeah, Chamber has its own role as far as promote business programs. And yes, I hear you. And I wanted to say that with this new council, my new council members are very, very engaged. And one of my council members, well, I have my one-on-one with council members. One of my council members will bring me to do. my council members will bring me to do's, just, let's look at this business, this business has this issue, and then, and I will take that, and I will delegate that task to community development director and for him to do some research on it or his staff. So we are very much wanted to help the local businesses to, to do better and to, to, to contribute to our economy.
Definitely. I think that after, like, at the time of the development of the downtown design district, a large part of the conversation was what can be done structurally, what can be done in the codes, or in a more, yeah, just a mechanism that's a little bit more codified that can kind of increase that. And so I know we'll hear about it next time, but it's something I'd like to see in the goals.
I can discuss that also during the next item when I present on our community development department priorities.
I have a question for you with respect to the projection of revenues going forward. Is that just based on increased TOT tax, increased property tax, or what are the?
Yeah, there are a formula, we had this, the financial department had a model they use after, and it's a moderate increase on TOT and sales tax, it's, it's, it's very, very moderate. And on property tax, we are looking at a few percentage, so it's everything we're, we're looking at from, it's a trend, and again, you know, it's 10 years, a snapshot, 10 years, a lot of things can happen within 10 years.
It's a best guess.
Yeah, best guess, yes.
With respect to the economic vitality section, this is my comments there are, in many of my discussions with the public, there's been concern, maybe is the best word, about how the waterfront leases happen and how those are marketed, and the suggestion has been made by the public that those leases might be better managed by an outside, maybe commercial broker, especially the advertisement of those, because there's very little knowledge outside of the city of Morro Bay, specifically outside of the people who inhabit the waterfront of the city of Morro Bay about those leases and, and those, and the availability of those properties. And I know most of them have already been re-leased, but there's a few that are coming up, and I think that we should, as a city, try to advertise that to the largest statewide, if not nationwide, audience rather than just the local crew. And on the same vein, many of the other city-owned properties, some which might be part of this, this research that's going on right now, that of what our city-owned properties are, some of those might be properties that we could lease out, and some of those might be properties that we would deem excess and would sell. But those sales and leases should also, my suggestion, would be managed by an outside commercial broker and advertised widely as opposed to just taking care of internally, locally, because internally, locally is a small audience, and we need to get a much larger audience. Same would be said in my opinion, subjectively, about the moorings and the slips in Morro Bay that, that the city manages, those might, we have a protected harbor, which in this part of California is quite rare, and to compare our mooring fees and slip fees against, let's say, Port San Luis isn't fair, because Port San Luis is an exposed open harbor, we would need to compare our fees to places, you know, that have protected harbors, Santa Cruz, Newport, et cetera. We don't have those population bases, but we should at least be trying to, to extract, for lack of a better word, the, the appropriate fees for those locations. With respect to community engagement, I'll, I'll bring my comments up there, it's mostly around the historic preservation ordinance, and I'll, I'll wait for Airline's presentation to talk about that, but I have some suggestions there as well. And then I reiterate Commissioner Engraffia's opinion about the community benefits discussion, and that needs to come to a close at some point. We've done, I'd, I'd guess, half the work at least, it's been going on for four years, something like that. And I'll leave it at that. I would like to open it up to questions from the public, though, if that's all right with you, Ms. Kimball.
Thank you.
If anyone from the public would like to speak to this item, the city council goals, now's that opportunity.
Betty Winholtz, I'll try to limit to areas within the planning commission, very much would like to see you come back with the items that you've talked about, the design district, which we know is coming back, a community benefits, parking, good or bad, you know, that all needs to come back this year. I, I really don't like the idea of setting goals that are big projects. I would rather people know that they just have to do their daily job, and then maybe here's this one or two things they have to do on top of that. So I'm not big on, on goal setting, but the one thing I would add that isn't on there very directly, and that is about the homeless situation, and that Sharon O'Leary, for a decade, has tried to get the city to do a warming station. And there's a model in Santa Barbara before, the city of San Luis Obispo is now picking it up after a decade, and I don't understand why this city doesn't offer a warming station considering the kinds of weather we have on the coast in the winter. So I'm not real forgiving in terms of why this hasn't happened, but it needs to happen now. Thanks.
Anybody else? AGP, do we have any online hands raised?
Currently, I do not see any hands raised in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Joe?
It occurs to me when I, when I made my statement, I didn't really link it, my, my discussion of the acquisition of the elementary school, I didn't really link it to some of the, the city goals, and I should make that explicit in that, that property and, and it being developed represents both an effort of historical preservation of some of the existing buildings, and it's an outstanding opportunity to do both market-based and affordable housing on the property as well, which is, you know, another one of the goals of the city.
Yeah, I have, I forgot to mention, I'm also hugely in favor of trying to figure out some way of resolving, restoring, you know, fixing the school and maintaining some public use. And also, I forgot to mention, I believe that Slocog has some sort of county fire management plan or fire safety thing going on, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that or not, I saw something on the Slocog website that had asked for public input on areas of concern that Slocog might be inter-jurisdictionally involved with all the various agencies, i.e. Cal Fire, i.e. the various communities and their police and fire, with fire setbacks and clearing and tree maintenance, tree vegetation removal, et cetera. And I know that Cal Fire recommends certain distances around residences in high-fire districts, like 200-foot, you know, radius around a home, et cetera, cleared of flammable vegetation, and it, it would seem like the city might try its best to participate in whatever ongoing county efforts are going, if we can find them. I know sometimes these, I'm sorry, I don't know the specific names of things, but sometimes they slip under the radar, and I, it's right on their main website right now.
So the county is updating the multi-jurisdictional comprehensive local hazards mitigation plan, and Fire Chief McCrayne, as well as the rest of the executive team, are engaging in that, that update process.
And is that something, I would just encourage the city to look on Slocog, the residents of the city to look on Slocog's website, because there is an opportunity to provide feedback as a resident, so I'll leave it at that there.
Yeah, and I believe it's County of San Luis Obispo, OES is the lead on that.
Okay. The OES stands for?
Office of Emergency Services.
Thank you. And then, just one more time, on March 13th, that community forum, which is happening here, what time is that?
Sorry, it's 5:30, start at 5:30.
And on March 25th, the goal-setting, council goal-setting workshop?
That's a special council meeting, it's going to start at 3:00.
At 3:00, at 3:00 PM on the 25th, and presumably also here.
Here, this room, yes.
That's all. Okay, I think, does that?
Yes, I'm very thankful for your, for your input, and with that, I think it's time for the community development director to, to discuss with you your, your, your mandatory work plan.
So I'm Airline Singhwald, your community development director. Good evening, chair, mayor, and commission. It is an honor to be able to present to you my 2025 priorities report for the community development department. So just a outline for the presentation this evening. So really, the purpose of the report is to give you an overview of the department's workload capacity to work on some of these great projects and ideas that we've been discussing, and we'll discuss more this evening, to talk about our mandatory and discretionary or council-directed workload that we complete as a department, and what our current priorities are in alignment with those council goals that the city manager discussed. In addition, I will present our 2024 permit data, just to give you a sensible overall development activity and workload for the planning and building divisions. So starting with department staff capacity, I think this just kind of underscores that we do operate within, you know, limited resources. So we have 9.5 FTEs, about half in the planning division and half in the building division. Many of the kind of longer-range planning projects that we discussed with the commission and some of the examples that were just discussed on, on the last item, they are worked on mostly by the planning division, and you can see we have about three and a half full-time planners and one and a half support staff in the planning division to work on those projects. And of course, 4.5 FTEs in the building division, and they primarily process building permits, perform building inspections, and perform our code enforcement duties for the city. And I'll go into more detail on those responsibilities in upcoming slides. So I think a really helpful way to describe the community development department's workload is breaking it down by mandatory and council-directed or discretionary. So mandatory workload means things that we are required by state, federal, or, or local law, by our own general plan, to, to complete. And on the left-hand side here, I have the items that the planning division works on, and the right-hand side is the building division. So we are required to process land use permits and coastal development permits. So when an applicant submits an application, we have to process that, that application under state law. Any planning permit that's submitted, if it's a discretionary permit, we're required by the California Environmental Quality Act to conduct an environmental determination for that application. If it is a project that qualifies for a CEQA exemption, then our staff planners will prepare that notice of exemption. If it's a larger development project, like a panorama or battery energy storage project for Austra, or larger housing development applications, those oftentimes will require an environmental impact report or a mitigated negative declaration, and we don't have in-house staff to prepare those types of environmental documents, so we will often hire consultants to prepare those documents on behalf of the city. Our planners also administer the city's community development block grant program, so the city receives a share of the county's federal CDBG funds, and we work with the county and, and city council and other departments to administer those, those projects and programs. We have to maintain compliance with a state housing element law, that means updating the housing element periodically. It also means as the state adopts new laws, such as ABU laws, density bonus laws, we have to go look at our zoning code to see if we need to update the zoning code to implement those laws and be consistent with those, those laws, which we're currently in process of doing. City lease management, so for the inland, not inland, but not including tidlands, the community development department's involved in some of the lease management of city-owned properties in the city. And then a major effort that we're currently working on is the short-term rental ordinance implementation, so developing a short-term rental permit process and all of the forms that go along with that process and implementing the process, as well as ongoing short-term rental enforcement actions. On the building side, primarily, you know, building is responsible for processing building permits, doing the, the plan checks. For larger building permits, we will send those permits to a consultant, CSG, to review the, the plans on behalf of the city, but the vast majority of permits are plan-checked in-house, and then, of course, we have a building inspector performing the building inspections. Our staff are regularly, every day, are answering questions and helping applicants and contractors with their, their building permit applications. I'm very proud of the, the level of service that we're able to provide at the front counter of the planning and building divisions. We answer a high, high volume of, of questions and are able to really go above and beyond to, to support, whether it's a neighbor or an applicant or a contractor, to help them be successful in their pursuits. And of course, ongoing code enforcement activities as well is mandatory. So the next category, and I'm seeing there is a typo on, on this slide, is not mandatory workload, but council-directed. So these are items that are not necessarily required by the general plan or state or federal law, but they're work efforts that we've been directed by the city council to complete. I like to also call these discretionary work because they're not mandatory. So here's the same list that was included in your staff report, and we discussed some of these items in the previous presentation, downtown design district, so there was quite a bit of discussion on that, on the city manager's item, and we are going to come to planning commission at the next meeting, March 18th, for the downtown design district subcommittee to present their recommendations. And essentially, what the DDD of downtown design district is, is a set of recommendations the subcommittee came up with to look at how the city can promote and increase housing and economic vitality in the downtown area while at the same time preserving, you know, community character, addressing concerns like parking, making sure that we're not impacting character-defining buildings, considering impacts to views to the bay from, you know, Morro Bay Boulevard and Harbor Street. And so the downtown design district subcommittee does have a list of recommendations. Just a spoiler alert on that, it does involve an idea of a form-based code. That doesn't mean that the downtown design district subcommittee is going to prepare that form-based code, it's really just an idea, this is an action that the city could take further to be able to accomplish some of the, the goals of the downtown design district. And so when the subcommittee presents to, to the commission, and, you know, we'll listen to the commission's feedback, ultimately, that'll come back to the council, and if the council says, you know, yes, we think this form-based code idea is a, a good idea, we would look at the rest of the priorities that we're working on here, which is mostly the, the list in front of you here on the screen, and see, you know, when and how would it make sense to program that future work effort in with the rest of these, these projects. Something like a form-based code would almost certainly require assistance from a consultant, so we would require, you know, budget for that, and it would be, you know, possibly a multi-year effort, which would happen in years to come. The short-term rental ordinance implementation, so I spent a good amount of today finalizing my staff report for city council next Tuesday, where we're going to give a fairly comprehensive update on our efforts to implement the short-term rental ordinance. In past years, the city has been relying on the business license and TOT account process to review and approve requests for short-term rentals, and that has had some, some limitations. So we're, we have developed over the last six months, a, a new permit type, and it's actually what's required by the ordinance is to have a permit type called a short-term rental permit. And we've developed an application form for that permit, a new workflow in our permit tracking system, a kind of a self-help worksheet for applicants to determine whether or not they would be eligible for a short-term rental, and other informational materials that are posted on our website. The priority for the, the current calendar year, 2025, is to renew all of the existing short-term rental permit. So we have about 200 permitted short-term rentals, and we are sending out letters to those. those short-term rental owners, informing them that they are required by the ordinance to renew that permit annually, and we're going to have them complete this new permit form, and so we can review it, schedule the required inspections of the property, really know on a, you know, site-by-site basis if it is a full-home short-term rental, which is subject to the 175 cap, or is it a home-share rental, which is not subject to the cap, and essentially audit all of the existing permitted short-term rentals, and if they meet the requirements, then we would issue a new STR permit for that property. A next item that we discussed on the previous discussion is inventory of, of city-owned parcels, and we're scheduled to present that to City Council later this month. The way I like to think of this initiative is when the city is making a decision on a property, whether it's to potentially acquire a property, or to lease a city-owned property, or to sell a city-owned property, or just not sure what, what action yet, just having this, this resource of a comprehensive portfolio of city-owned properties, and which ones may have some economic potential for the city, would just be about a very valuable resource to help the council navigate those important financial decisions. So minor zoning code update, I want to qualify this as it hasn't technically been directed by council, but this is something that our department has identified as a real high need. So right now, this minor zoning code update will include changes to the ADU ordinance to implement state law. It also includes some changes to fencing requirements, just to clarify provisions that have been confusing to, to staff and, and the public. Another item that's included in this is, so 824 passed by the voters, and 824 does require that there are some changes to the zoning code to be consistent with 824. So specifically, 824 requires any land use change for the identified parcels on the Vistra side of Measure D area requires voter approval for any of those land use changes. Well, that's not specified yet in, in the zoning code, so we're going to update the zoning code to actually reiterate that to change the land use for any of these properties, in addition to going through the regular process of Planning Commission and City Council and Coastal Commission, a applicant would also have to put an item on, on the ballot for the voters to approve that, that land use change. So it's a good example of updating the zoning code to make sure it's consistent with other areas of law like 824. Waterfront Master Plan update, so the Commission, I think, has heard me talk about this quite a bit. We have finished all, receiving all of the nominations for the Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee, and later this month, we'll be going to City Council with the resolution for the council to formally approve the, the makeup of the WOMPAC with the seven representatives. I currently, we currently have the request for proposals for the Waterfront Master Plan update published on the, the city's bid posting website. I've received questions from several, from several consultants that have posted responses to those questions online on the bid posting website, and we're looking forward to receiving those proposals and putting together a selection committee to, to review them. I plan to, once we select a consultant, we will be going to the first WOMPAC meeting to get input from the WOMPAC on the final scope of work that the consultant will, will use in their contract for the Waterfront Master Plan update, and that'll address questions such as, you know, what are the, the final boundaries of the expanded Waterfront Master Plan area? And just making sure that the, we have the, the WOMPAC's buy-in to the overall scope of work for that effort. Historic Preservation Ordinance, we discussed that also in the, the last item. So what we have told City Council is we have an initial draft that was provided by the Historic Society. My team is working on many other things. It hasn't been a, a major focus of ours right now to review that, but it's on our list of things to do, and we're hoping by this summer to be able to come to City Council and present what I'm calling an ordinance framework, so saying, we consider what the Historical Society's recommended, we've done additional research, we think that an effective Historic Preservation Ordinance may be structured kind of as follows, and have a, a framework describing that, and then we can get input from the council, and if the council supports that approach, we would finalize a draft Historic Preservation Ordinance, publish that for public comments, and then eventually bring it to Planning Commission and City Council for review and final action. Next is the Battery Plant Urgency Ordinance, so City Council just extended that for a full two years, which is going to give city staff time to do research, to come back to council and just have a discussion on which, what approach we want to take for a permanent set of regulations. So right now, the city zoning code does not contain any regulations for battery plant projects. The Urgency Ordinance provides a two-year ban on battery plant projects, but once that expires, there would still be no regulations unless the council adopts a permanent ordinance. And we have done quite a bit of research already on that, and really, the, the two main options there are a permanent prohibition, so some jurisdictions are adopting permanent prohibition, battery plant projects not allowed at all in that jurisdiction, and others are adopting ordinances that allow them, subject to special use standards that may require, you know, buffers to residential areas and other sensitive uses, you know, requiring a conditional use permit, and just other development standards to protect health and safety while allowing for battery plant projects. Of course, it is a complex discussion because of the AB 205 process would still be available to applicants, so they could, they could still bypass city zoning. And then finally, we are engaging with the, the county and their consultant, Mott McDonald, on an offshore wind operation and maintenance infrastructure study. So these are the items that our planning staff, our three full-time planning staff are working on, along with processing, you know, all of the coastal development permits and land use permits and subdivisions that are being submitted. So it's a pretty significant workload, and I'm very proud of my, my team's work on this. So just briefly, I know that Public and Commission is always interested in just seeing numbers of development activity in the city, so my Building Division made sure to point out that we have the highest level of building permits issued in the last six years, and the six-year timeframe is significant because that's when we started recording data in City Works, our permit tracking system, and 527 total permits were issued in 2024, which is that six-year high. When we talk about permits issued, I think what a lot of people want to focus in on is permits for, for new residential development, so I have a breakout of that in the, the table here. And there was a pretty large increase of permits for new single-family dwellings from 2023 to 2024, went from two units to, to 12 units, also an increase in ADUs, 10 to 219. So I'll just leave that up for a second for you to look at, and of course, it's also in the staff report. And then this slide here just summarizes the planning permits issued, and you will see there has been a, a drop in planning permits from 23 to 24, of 75 down to 56. That is to be expected with the new comprehensive zoning code update taking effect in March of 2024, that for a lot of project types that previously would have required a planning permit, they can now go straight to a building permit. A planner still has to look at that building permit, but they don't require a planning permit because there were these streamlining provisions in the zoning code update, so the numbers are lower, the actual development activity is about the same, if, if not higher. But it does, I want to be very transparent about this, if we're not, if there are fewer projects that we have to prepare staff reports on, and presentations, and resolutions, and take them to Planning Commission, there are definitely staffing efficiencies there, even though the overall development activity is about the same. And so those efficiencies have increased our capacity to be able to work on all of those longer-range planning projects that I was talking about on, on the previous slide. And then I talked about this actually on the Five for One Tascara Road project, but just again, here's our current progress halfway through the 10-year arena cycle, where we're just shy of 50% of the total number of units being permitted, but if you break it down by the actual lower-income levels, you can see we're pretty far below our targets. So at the very low-income level, thanks to the Haslow Sunset Terrace project, we do have 26 units compared to 97 required low-income, eight have been final compared to 60 required moderate. A lot of our ADUs, in the ADUs that are under 500 square feet can be counted towards this moderate-income category. The vast majority of this 35 is likely to be ADUs under 500 square feet, and then most of our units are above moderate. And above moderate means not deed-restricted, not affordable by design, it's any market-rate development would be counted in this above-moderate category. And the staff recommendation is just to receive and file this priorities report, and I'm available for questions.
What are some examples of the other residential category for the permit table that you showed?
Great question. So it is mostly residential, like rooftop solar, and also addendums, so an addendum would just be essentially like a, a change order. If the plans change, we require a building permit addendum to reflect that.
You know, I really welcome this listing of the council-directed workload. I mean, it's, it's a pretty impressive workload, and it, it justifies, you know, my reluctance over the years I've been on the Planning Commission to, to really ever, you know, burden you with, you know, more projects that originate with this body. And the, the other thought is also, again, returning to that notion of, of Subcommittee's and recruiting people from the community. You know, having spent some time on, on the Downtown Design District Subcommittee, I, I'm really confident that a group like that could come up with a, what is probably the most challenging task, which is a form-based code. I'm really confident that that group, by talking to other communities and researching, could come up with a serviceable draft of, of, of form-based zoning, and, and save the Development Office a great deal of that initial work. And, you know, and I recall, with respect to the Preservation Ordinance, I have a cousin who's in charge of the Historic Preservation in Gundale, and he was nice enough to send me their, their ordinance, and he could be a wonderful source in terms of putting other ordinances that we could contrast and compare. So it just kind of substantiates for me that there's a lot of work that, good work that could get done without additionally burdening the Community Development Office.
I have a couple of thoughts. The, with respect to the Waterfront Master Plan, because you guys are trying to decide what the scope of work is for that right now, for your, whoever the, the planning company is that creates that draft, perhaps you could include, how did I say this? Within the scope of work for the Waterfront Master Plan, incorporate the community benefits discussion with the intent to have those benefits laid out within the master plan, because it's primarily, they rotate around the waterfront, do they not? So it's seen that if we just wrap those community benefits right into that discussion, right into that project plan, then we sort of kill two birds with one stone, because we have the community input, we have, you know, a large group, we have multiple task force meetings, et cetera, et cetera. It seems like it's the same sort of set of events that would be required to establish the community benefits separately, so why not wrap them together? That's, that's one thought. And then you mentioned about the, about the residential permits, and you said RENA required, but it's my understanding RENA is essentially just telling you, you need to zone for a certain number of units. You're not required to actually build those units. What, what, what makes buildings get built is money and time and the appropriate political situation, et cetera, but we're not actually required to build.
No, that, yeah, that's, that is correct. We are required to report annually to the State Housing and Community Development Department on, it is called the city's progress in achieving the, the RENA, and the slide I presented is our latest 2024 numbers that we presented to State HCD. But you're correct, technically, the city's obligation is just to, to zone, and, you know, for-profit and nonprofit developers are the ones who actually build those units.
Yeah, okay, I just want to clarify that. Then back to the historic ordinance, Historic Preservation Ordinance, there's a lot of data out there, and I know within our plans here, it talks about using the draft from... Sorry.
I'm sorry, Chair Meyer, what was the question?
The, the Community Historic Preservation Ordinance discussion. It states we're going to be following the draft from this, from the Historical Society, and, and I would say that that's, that's one idea they have, but that isn't a draft that necessarily we want to follow, it's just one of many, 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 many different Historic Preservation Ordinance ideas, and my suggestion would be to follow the National Trust for Historic Preservation guidelines rather than our local guide, rather than a local draft. We can incorporate the local draft into our discussions and so forth, but it, there's a far more comprehensive discussion that, that happens at, at the national level on this, and I have a copy of that actually for you here. But along with that, the Historical Society could contemporaneously, with your discussion about the various aspects of what Preservation Ordinance would entail or incorporate, the Historical Society could very easily be tasked with creating that inventory of potentially historic buildings in town, and potentially even giving us an idea of what areas of town might be eligible for a, an historical district, like is there a district that we would call the, the Arts District at Morro Bay? Like, there's the old art, there's the old art column at Morro Bay is a district. There's the parts of the waterfront which could be considered an historic district. I don't know how much is left down there that's historic, but the downtown's definitely historic. And so those, those areas and those individual buildings, and even the individuals themselves, a part of our community that is the historic humans, the fishermen and Franklin Riley, et cetera, that doesn't have to be laid out by staff, that could be very easily taken care of by this brain trust that Commissioner Graffia is describing, and I would suggest that, that the Historic Society probably is already attempting to create many of these things, and we should work with them, rather than trying to have your staff take all, take all the work.
Chair Meyer, do you mind if I respond to a few of those comments? So those are great comments, they've just kind of triggered additional thoughts in my mind. So first, on Historic Preservation Ordinance, yeah, I may have misspoke or not been clear, but the, the goal is, is not to take the Historic Society's draft ordinance to council, it is, I recognize that one has been prepared, a lot of time and thought has gone into it, so I want to make sure that we really give it the attention it deserves when staff, you know, objectively does our research and brings a framework to, to the council to consider, but it won't necessarily be what the Historic Society prepared it could be, something else. But it's a, a great resource for us to start with. You mentioned Waterfront Master Plan, scope of work, and making sure that includes a public benefits analysis, and that, let me clarify, so the RFP that's currently available on the city's website for the Waterfront Master Plan update, it has a, a very detailed scope of work. So I spend a lot of time thinking about the Waterfront Master Plan, and when I go to coffee or walk down the street, or I'm at a Planning Commission meeting, or a Harbor Advisory Board meeting, or a Barker, Dyer Master Lease Hold, Master Lease holders meeting, I frequently hear ideas of, yeah, Waterfront Master Plan should include this and this, and some of those ideas make sense, some don't make as much sense. So the approach I took for the RFP is I, I listed out all of the different components or, or objectives that we want to or, or objectives that we want to see in the waterfront master plan update. Some of those are, you know, very specific to the grant that we have from the coastal commission. For example, it has to include the sea-level rise analysis update and adaptation plan. But there are other things like a plaza plan to provide a, a vision for converting those street-end parking lots into public plazas. Things like, like that, that are a good idea, it makes sense, and so I listed that out in this scope for the waterfront master plan update, and it also included the public benefits, having the consultant look at, you know, what are all the public benefits that are needed, what have past projects have provided, what do other jurisdictions do, and incorporating that somehow into the waterfront master plan update. And I'm really excited to see the approach that consultants propose to like synthesize all those different elements into a scope of work for waterfront master plan update. And because this is such an important policy document, and the WOMPAC members will bring so much special expertise, I just want to make sure that I'm able to discuss that, that final scope of work with the WOMPAC before it gets solidified in a consultant contract. So I hope that helps provide a little bit more context on the waterfront master plan update scope. And then just to clarify on the RENA progress, I think it is an important point to make that while, you know, technically, the city does not build housing, our only responsibility is to zone for housing, we are, we are held accountable to the RENA production. So jurisdictions that are significantly behind in achieving their RENA goals could risk losing some local control over certain housing development projects, and also could be less competitive or not eligible for a certain state housing grant. So we, there are some, there is accountability for, for RENA progress, even though we don't build the units.
Great, thank you. I think it'd be appropriate to open this up to the public if there's any further questions on, on Eirlan's presentation from the public, but now would be that time.
Betty Winholz, I do want to clarify or correct myself, when I was talking earlier about a warming station, that is important to me, but it's really about safe parking, and that's the thing that SLO is adopting, and that's the thing that Santa Barbara already has, so let me correct myself on that. I had a couple of questions. One is, I understand that our CBDG grant actually is managed by the county, so is that really something that the city spends a lot of time on? Second, I noticed that what I assume is Kim Fowler's position was only .5, or did I mislook at how that, could, could you put that slide back up, because maybe I didn't correctly categorize her in there? And third, I'm just really excited that the vacation rental ordinance is coming back, and that we're looking at that, that we're evaluating it. It's like number-one priority for people that live in the neighborhoods, so that is really exciting to me. Did you want, do you mind putting that back up, Mr. Singwald?
I'll look to the chair.
Oh, that's right, excuse me.
It is, it is a full-time FTE.
Oh, is it? Okay, then I was looking at the wrong line.
On the building side, I think you were looking.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I mislooked at that. Is there one more thing? Oh, and then my last comment would be that, looking at the community benefits, if that goes to, and is part of the master, or the, the waterfront master plan, and I understand why it would be, then that kind of, I don't know that the word jeopardize is correct, but that means it wouldn't be coming back to you for a couple of years. So is that, is that the direction that you want to go? I thought we were more interested in seeing that come to planning earlier rather than later.
That's a good point. I don't, I would ask staff, Eirlan, the, I didn't see community benefits within the context of, of your presentation per se, is that something we are expecting to come back, or is that, did I miss it somehow? Or, or is, in other words, is incorporating it into the waterfront master plan duplicating efforts that have already been sort of agenda, or not agenda?
So I think incorporating it into the waterfront master plan is a, a way to accomplish that objective that I think makes sense and will be, you know, in context with the, the rest of the waterfront area, that really seems to be the appropriate tool to address the, what we've heard from the commission about public benefits.
Yeah, it seemed, seemed like it to me as well, just they, they kind of go hand-in-hand. Do we have, any other members of the public that wish to speak? And AGP, do we have any hands raised online about this item?
No, Commissioner, there are no raised hands.
Okay, so I'll close a public comment on that, and I think, does that wrap up our discussion, or you guys have any further points or responses?
No additional comments, thank you.
Okay, and I think we're reaching the end of our agenda. I've lost it. Yeah, that's, unless, Eirlan, I don't think you have any development director comments tonight?
No, just my, my presentation, I think covered it all.
I didn't ask you guys if you had any commissioner comments on, nope. So I will adjourn us to the next regular planning commission meeting at this location, the Vets Hall, on March 18th. We're adjourned, thank you.